We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Our call says that you are here by notification that a town hall meeting hosted by the Polack City Commission are held on the following day, times and places, Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, at the Price Martin Center to 20 North 11th Street, Palatka, to commence at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to take input from the churches and the public on the Palatka Municipal Code, Chapter 10, Alcoholics Beverages. Wednesday, June 8th, 2016, Polack Golf Club, 1715 Moseley Avenue, to commence at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to take input from the businesses and public on the Palatka Municipal Code, Chapter 10, Alcoholics Beverages. Please govern yourselves accordingly. We'll call this meeting to order, and we'll ask, we have applications, passionate leaders in our application today?
Yes.
And also the pledge. That's right. Father, we thank you for this time to be together and to be genuinely, passionately concerned about our city. Father, I thank you for these that sit at the head table, that have allowed themselves to be elected to a position of leadership, a position of authority, a position of respect. Father, we know that there is no one, no position in government that is there without you having ordained both the government and the pleasure. So Father, may we each and every one in this room this evening, may we conduct ourselves knowing that we are in your presence. Father, I ask that all of us, all of us, respect the meaning, the love, and our heavenly Father. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown, please. Commissioner Rowland?
President.
Commissioner Campbell?
President.
Commissioner Moore?
President.
All members are present.
Okay, so that we're, we anticipated a lot more people coming in here today, but we will continue accordingly, regardless of what the number is. Our format simply, because it's a town hall meeting, we want to make sure we're gonna have public comment at first, all public comments, general public comments, then in the three minutes, we'll actually be taking on the topic discussion. After that, we will have a brief conversation about the history of the ordinance, so that everyone knows what the county's ordinance looks like, what the city ordinance looked like, what ordinance was historically, and where we are. And then we'll start to have some dialogue. And I think that, from that perspective, because we have such a small group, we can actually have some interactive conversation to try to see if we can get down to some questions. So, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open the floor, just for housekeeping purposes for public, for general public comment. Is there anyone here for general public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, we'll move on to our introduction of our topic. And, the introduction of our topic, everyone knows the purpose of us being here, is to see where we are compared to where we were a decade ago as it relates to the alcohol ordinance. In particular, I think the commission, based upon me bringing the topic forward, indicated that we wanted to see what the community's perspective was on expanding the hours, expanding the hours, if that was something that the community wanted to see, as well as whether the community wanted to include consumption during those hours for the purposes of creating some, and then of increased sales or, or business perspectives for merchants, and also so that restaurants who also had the concerns about being able to sell mimosa or Bloody Mary during brunch time would be able to meet those needs. So, those are the things that we're looking at to determine what the consensus is from the community, if it's so that things remain status quo, if there's a modification necessary, or if there's a need to make a change. And so we want to have that conversation, we want to have an open conversation in different forums, in different locations throughout the city, so that people have an opportunity to really come forward. And so what we'll do now is we'll look at our current, our current city code as it relates to hours of operation, which is the first line. And it says that "It shall be unlawful for any person to sell, consume, serve, or permit to be served or consumed any alcoholic beverages except, as otherwise listed herein, at any licensed premises except between during the hours of Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM, the following morning, Sunday from 1:00 PM until 12:00 midnight. New Year's Eve defaulting on a day, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM until 4:00 AM, the following morning. New Year's Eve defaulting on a Sunday from 1:00 PM until 4:00 AM, the following morning. Exceptions, any license C E for on premise consumption shall have a period of thirty minutes from the time to sell of alcoholic beverages are required under the section to cease, during which consumption of alcoholic beverages may continue, within which to clear his licensed place of business of all customers and persons. But in no event shall alcoholic beverages be sold in such licensed premises after the time to sell of alcoholic beverages required under the section to cease." So basically, at 2:00, consumption of alcohol has to end at 2:30, and you can't sell anything after that 2:00 period. On Sunday nights at midnight, and it has to end at 12:30. We look at the county's code. The county's code says that the daily hour of closing for all vendors engaged in the sale or dispensing of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises in an unincorporated area of the county is hereby set and declared to be 12:00 midnight. Provided however, that the closing hours for Friday, Saturday, and New Year's shall be extended until 2:00 AM. A vendor shall be open or reopen for business before 7:00 AM, daily or 12:00 noon on Sundays. So, there's a difference of one hour on Sundays from the city to the county. Within a period of thirty minutes following the closing, which is very similar to what we have in the city, set forth in subsection 8 of this section, "All customers, patrons, and guests shall vacate the premises of the vendor. Alcoholic beverages shall not be served to, consumed by, or in possession of any person on said premises after this thirty minute period. ordering as contemplated under Florida statute shall be prohibited on the premises of the vendor at all times," blah, blah, blah. And so, when you look at the ordinance, that's the, that's the major difference between the two. We look at the city's ordinance. City hours of sale or service prior to 2005. The old ordinance for the city said, "Hours when sales prohibited shall be unlawful for any person to sell, consume, serve, permit, to be served, or consumed at any place holding a license under the State Beverage Department of Florida, except between and during the hours of Monday through Thursday, 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight." So there was a change. Friday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, the following morning. Saturday, 6:00 AM until 2:00 AM, the following morning. Sunday, 12:00 noon until 12:00 midnight. And that was the difference. And so as we look at, so when we look at the code, we see where the changes are. And so our conversation today is simply, what is the pleasure of the community? We've got our Polack Police Department out here, we also have Chief Lamper from the Fire Department, and we've got, we've got three citizens who came out, we've got former Commissioner Eric Kitts, our esteemed pastor, Grace Fellowship is here as well, and we also have former Commander Reno Fields from, from the Polack Police Department out here as well. And so, we wanted to have that dialogue, and, and really just start to have a conversation. So I'll, at this time, I guess I'll open the floor to questions. Chief, you, you got to, already kind of heard the presentation. Chief Shaw went back and looked at the data from the years past, and from that data, we found that there were fifteen DUIs during those, during the exception periods over the course of the last five, five years?
On Sundays.
On Sundays, over the course of the last five years, two, two of which failed during the prohibited hours that we're discussing. Were you able to find out there was, was there any relationship to, did we find out, did we make any extenuating circumstances that you saw concerning those DUIs? Okay. And, so we want to have that conversation, and I guess we'll open the floor at this time, if the commissions doesn't have anything. We'll open the floor, and if we have any, any speakers that want to go ahead and ask some questions, then we'll, we'll have that dialogue. And so, the floor is open for dialogue. Ladies first.
Well, I have some statements, I'm not sure I have questions, but I might. First, I wanted, can you all hear me?
My turn. There's a power button on the right side. Only fifty ways.
I'm left handed, it's the right side, down there. Can you hear me?
Clear.
Okay. I want to give y'all a little brief history about the alcohol ordinance that was passed in 2005. It was proposed in 2003 by former Commissioner Hernanizula. Hernan, like most people, liked to go out and have a drink and enjoy himself. He found out that there were massive problems after hours when the other counties closed, people were coming in, when the other counties and cities closed, people were coming into Palatka and drinking, and there were problems. There was police calls for service, there were fights. Commissioner Zula was very concerned, so he asked the then-police chief to, and Mr. Holmes, to work on the alcohol ordinance. That ordinance was worked on over a period of two years, between '03 and '05. During that time, there were numerous public workshops held at City Hall, maybe some at Price Martin, but I think they were all at City Hall. There was several thousand people total turned out, and merchants came out, church members came out, citizens came out. The ordinance was not about the church, it was not about church people at all, but churches came out and spoke in favor of it, or against it, depending. In '05, the then-city commission decided that what the current ordinance that you just talked about was the best thing to put on the books. There were high calls for service, I don't know what the number was at that time. The ordinance stood, and over the years, between '05 and 2010, a couple, one downtown merchant would come and want to have the hours extended sometimes, either on Sunday morning or Sunday afternoon. Meetings were held then, and then the then-commissions voted not to change anything based on some information supplied by the police department as to how much it would cost in overtime to extend the Sunday evening. In 2010, the proposal was to extend the Sunday evening from midnight till 2:00 AM, and that's when the police backed out on overtime hours and various things, and they did a study, and it would cost the police department roughly $10,000 in overtime and all that kind of stuff. The commission decided that if, again, like Chief Shaw said a couple of weeks ago, the ordinance wasn't broke, and so they didn't change it. They had a couple of people that served alcohol wanting it changed, they had one alcohol serving establishment, got it completely with the commission not to change it, and he said that would cost him extra money and benefits and having these people work on Sunday mornings. So the ordinance was left as it was until roughly a month or so ago, when it was talked about being changed again. As far as it goes with the special festivals like Blue Crab or Azalea, and the golf tournaments at the golf course, there's never been any problem with those people coming and getting the commission to suspend the alcohol ordinance, as well as the sound ordinance, where maybe you could do something special like that, and it's worked out very well. I think that the, the question, the question is not about, it's not about churches. Will this affect churches to some degree? Maybe, maybe not. I doubt that it probably will in particular. If the city does change the ordinance to extend, to extend the hours to Sunday morning, it would only affect maybe a couple of the downtown churches as, as the parking, because the people are at the business of the parking, then they might, they might conflict with the church parking, but that's probably not a super big issue. The issue, I think, the main issue that needs to be looked at, and Chief Shaw said at the previous meeting, one of the previous meetings, that the alcohol-related arrests and calls for service for the police department had gone down from, I thought he said a high forty-four, down to fifteen, and then now it's currently zero, but apparently I made the wrong notes when he said the night fifteen, when you said the night fifteen, so it's gone down to fifteen calls for service during that six-hour period on Sundays to zero. I think what needs to be done...
That's not, that's pretty much...
Well DUIs, but I'm, the calls for service are the things, I'm, DUIs, yeah, that's a big deal, and I'm concerned about that. I'm more concerned about calls for service when, when one or more patrol officers have to respond to an alcohol-serving establishment to break up a fight or some type of disturbance where there's no arrest made, but a call for service generally requires a policeman to be there for an hour while he does his thing, he makes his reports. While they're at those places, they are not available to respond to the public, and that was one of the main issues that's been brought up. And, I think that, right now, like Chief Shaw said a month ago, it's not broken, it's not broken, then why are we trying to change yet? And I, if you, you know, if you don't want to do it on Sunday morning because you think well that's giving some special purposes to churches, then do that, that six hours on Monday morning, do it on Saturday morning. But I think that that time period where, I mean, the stats from Chief say there's no alcohol-related arrests or calls for service during that period of time. And when they do do calls for service, and their arrests, of course, then that is money that the police department has to put out. Right now, you've got to go for the six hours where there's no calls for service for that particular, that particular type of a business. So I think, I would not be opposed at all if you all wanted to change it to new time to coincide with the county. But if you have, if you allow serving on Sunday mornings, and the county doesn't, then we'll have the same problem that we had sort of ago when, when what Putnam had more lax hours in the adjoining counties, including Putnam St. John's, and it caused some issues. So, if you don't want to do it on Sunday morning, if you think that's giving preference to churches, or you think there's something a big deal about that, move it to Saturday morning, move it to Monday morning. But I think, if it isn't broken, we don't need to fix it, and I think it's working out fine. And if a business, if a business is relying only on those few hours on Sunday morning, and that's the only thing that's keeping them in business, then they're not going to stay in business. So basically, it's not broken, I don't think you need to change it, I'm opposed to changing it, except I would agree to new time on Sundays, I think that's, I have no problem with that.
As for me, I think for, I think personally, I would have liked to have a recommendation come forward, before the commission, as to what we would propose. I think this is a good forum, however, I don't think people are gonna come and give us a proposed time versus if they're for it or against it. I think the problem that stands as of now, or my issue would be, there's confusion on both ends, if it's in the city or if it's in the county. I would definitely like to see it be aligned, but as far as, I would like to have been or had a recommendation as to what's being proposed. That way, we can have something to kind of work from, because right now, I know we're in ground level, and we're just talking about the possibilities, but again, if we would have had some kind of proposed method of what, I mean, being that you brought it up, some kind of desire of what you would like, like to have seen, or a recommendation from Chief or somebody, that we could have something to kind of go off, because I think at this present moment, we're just gonna be talking about if they're for it or against it.
The reason I brought it up, the reason I brought it up and addressed it in this fashion was to make sure that we allow people to have their voice be heard. I didn't want to give my personal recommendation to it based upon what was there. My personal concern was that, here we are, we continually talk about what happened in '03, '04, '05, there's a totally different culture of where we are in this city as it relates to nightlife, entertainment, all these other things. It was, it was totally different from that period of time to where we are now. We constantly talk about this history of what went on. If you, people who were in the mix and knew what the history was at that time, this wasn't about, this wasn't about people coming from out of town, this is a personal hit, based on, this is a personal hit. And during that time, there were issues as to certain entities that were providing security, that were providing security. And some people hired the county, and some people hired the city. And the bottom line was, when it became an issue as to who was getting the offer of the security details and some of the other stuff, it got personal. And one way to get back at them was to come back with an ordinance, and to give you a whole bunch of information that was different. And so, when we talk about that history, during that time, yeah, you had Paradise Nightclub, you had Twerds, you had Biggs, you had John Els, you had all these different places that were there. You had several different entities are still alive and going on today. But again, there was more to it. If you listen to Chief and what he said before, there wasn't a significant drop in any of the activity or the cost of service before, because he looked at before and he looked at after. Isn't that what you said?
When we were speaking in reference to calls for service and calls generated, basically, we looked into the timeframe of Sunday from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The calls associated from 2010 to 2016 during the other hours, I had, there's a significant drop in calls for service due to the, the ordinance that was put in place for alcohol.
But you also have several businesses go out, you have several nightclubs go out of business during that time?
That's correct.
So, would you, so the question is, were your drops in call to service associated with businesses going out of business?
When we looked at the location within itself, even the ones that are named in business, are the cost of service to that location dropped as well?
The ones that remain in business don't even really have it, it's not. So...
During the associated hours that are over, the cost of service still dropped.
And not even their peak out, they don't have a peak, they didn't before. So, and I, and I think it's, and when you look at that, it's so many other factors that are involved in this process, that I think a lot of people may not, the average person is gonna be privy to it, because they're not looking at how these businesses are run. One of my things is, looking at uniformity of where we are, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm the one person who, who's probably, I, I don't think the cities, I think the city needs to try to find distinctive energy or the county any time they can when it comes to ordinances. One of the things that we have to do, is we have to figure out ways to make the city attractive to businesses, we gotta make the city attractive to different people. And so, if that means that there's an opportunity for, if a business can come into the city, or a restaurant can come into the city as opposed to being a block away, in, in an enclave, if they got an opportunity to say, okay, if we come into the city, we may be able to sell mimosa on Sunday, we may be able to sell Bloody Marys during a certain period of time. I haven't seen, in all the years I've been practicing law, I haven't seen that guy get a DUI or get arrested for getting out of at a brunch. I haven't seen it.
And that's when we did our, our study as far as on Sundays from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, when we addressed the cost of service on that date. Cost of services 2010 was forty-four calls for service within that timeframe, and 2016, 2015, calls dropped to less than five, five calls for service, or five calls generated in reference to alcohol for that, during that timeframe. And that timeframe strictly from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
And so, and so again, you talk about a recommendation.
Well, I guess more of a proposed time, I mean, we're talking about, we know, we know now it's at 1:00. What are we referring to, what would we like to see it go to? I think a proposed time would give us a little bit more for me to talk about versus just having it, saying we want to move it. Is it something that we want to try to live completely, or is it something that we want to move to 10:00? Is it something that we want to move to 9:00? Giving the proposed time, I think, will give me more to kind of consider.
I, I, I think that thought process is, until we hear everyone speaking, but I, I think you gotta look at, you look at uniformity, you know, in so many ways, that's that seven, that's that 7:00 AM uniformity. The county starts selling, they don't start consuming until noon. So we, we look at 7:00 AM as that, as that target, and we allow, and we allow consumption. What is, what is, what's the county's ordinance?
The county's... Are we referring just Sunday, or are we referring all Sunday?
Sunday, let's go Sunday.
On Sunday, the county doesn't start selling until noon.
They start selling at noon?
That's right.
And so, we're doing noon sales for the county, and we're doing 1:00 sales for the city. And so how many sales are we missing within that time period? How many, how many restaurants are missing opportunity to generate revenue? How often is the golf course missing opportunity to generate revenue, because someone could go somewhere else? And those are the things, and those are the questions that are out there. And I don't think anybody in this room has really probably had that data other than the merchants who will be here. And so, that's kind of where, that's kind of the thought process. And I want to get more information, you know, we've gone out and we've talked to some people, there are a number of people in this community that leave Putnam County and go to St. John's County so that they can have a brunch where they can have a mimosa, even if it's not your cup of tea, it's not mine, but at the same time, a person should have that option. We constantly find opportunities to usher money out of this community to other places. And, this day and age is far different than we were in 2002. This community has a whole lot different than we were, and if we consistently do things the way we've been doing, we're gonna get the same results. So, it's a new day, it's a new day and age, we need to look at where we are and what we're doing. And so, my thought process is, there is absolutely nothing wrong with a person being able to have them a mimosa while they're sitting down eating pancakes, eggs, or whatever they choose to eat. That is, that's not gonna create a problem for the church, it's not gonna create a health, safety, and welfare issue. I wholeheartedly agree that if we extend hours of alcohol consumptions past 2:00 AM, then we get into a whole different ballgame. And that's the, that's the true hours of when we start to see the bulk of DUI alcohol-related activity, because there's a greater period for consumption. In the morning hours, we don't necessarily see that, the people that are problematic during those hours typically from a legal standpoint, are people who have other issues, other social issues outside of what we're dealing with from that point. They typically struggle with alcoholism or some other stuff already. And so, I, I think we have to consciously look at that, even if it's not something that you do. If we're talking about creating a community where we start to, where we're looking at tourism, we're looking at other activities, we're stepping into the new age, and we gotta look at what we got in place, and we gotta examine it, and we gotta take in, we gotta take in information to see if there's something to do. We can't just wake up and anticipate a problem every time we try to make change, because we look at our codes and our ordinances, most of them were adopted from other communities, and we adjust over time. We're still adjusting ordinances every, every time we have a meeting, but I think we have to look at where we are, and consciously figure out, do we create opportunities for merchants, do we create advantages for merchants that are in the city versus the county, or are we creating restricted governance? And that's where we are.
I do have a question though.
Go ahead.
But first, I thought that the police do have to anticipate problems, I thought that was active, proactive policing, is you anticipate the problem, you're probably...
His job is not to make arrests.
But, I have a question for Mr. Holmes. If we, and you talk about mimosas, and you talk about drinks in bar, you know, restaurants where people can sit down and they have maybe some wine and spaghetti or something, but it's my understanding that we couldn't have the ordinance, just allow the restaurants to serve alcohol and prohibit the bars that are generally bars? Could we, is there a way, Mr. Holmes, that we could allow the, the legitimate restaurants that actually, they could go down and have some spaghetti or whatever, or go down and make gnocchi cafe, and I understand they want to serve something, is there a way to have the restaurants that serve food that have fifty or more seats and aren't qualified as bars, is there a way to let them be able to serve earlier and not have other alcohol service establishments that are actually bars serve earlier?
I believe there is. I don't think it's a state beverage law that, that differentiates between the hours of operation of restaurants and, and what you refer to as bars, I think that it's a function of our ordinance. I think that prior to 2005, we allowed restaurants to serve beer and wine, basically without a lot of, but certainly with not the same restrictions as, as bars had. So, I don't, I don't, as I'm sitting here right now, believe there'd be any, any constitutional or other prohibition with an ordinance that differentiated between what you're referring to, is, let's just say establishments primarily engage in sale of liquor as compared to establishments primarily engage in sale of, of food. And then, just throwing it out there for discussion also, would be grocery stores, for instance. You know, it's, I don't, I don't think there'd be a problem constitutionally or otherwise with allowing grocery stores to sell, although they sell of courses, beer and wine unless it's a, that is a liquor store, but I don't think there'd be a problem with them being able to sell beer and wine at a different time, or in different times than, than an establishment dedicated to the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Well, I would have no problem with us going for the county ordinance and having the, the sale, not happy sales on Sunday morning, but not the consumption on premises, and then of course, if you go to the county, we, I had money through Thursday, when we shut it off at 12:00 instead of 2:00 AM. And I understand that we want to get the customers that the county doesn't have in here, but you need to, you do have to think about what is it going to do to Palatka. I know this isn't the Palatka, the Palatka 2003, '05, '10, but police calls for service are the same, and the same things still generate the same cost of service, and I think that has to be taken into consideration. And I would like a manpower study done by the police department before any, and I know this is just a discussion... And I would like a manpower study done by the police department, uh, before any, and I know this is just discussion tonight, but I would like the police department to actually do a manpower study and to give you all and the public, if possible, in, in dollars, what it might cost to increase the hours, uh, or something like that. I think it's.
The guy that did that is no longer here.
Pardon?
The guy that did that is no longer here. We, we're not gonna manipulate data to do that.
Well, I realize that, and I realize your issue with him and his issue with you. Unfortunately, it was a sad situation going both ways, and I'm, I'm sorry it happened. Uh, but at, at this particular time, we have St. Augustine looking at restricting their hours because of legal issues, because of crime issues. And I think that it's okay to look at it, and maybe we need to change our hours. But I think we need to look at other cities, what they're doing, they're cutting back, we're talking about, we're looking about extending. We need to look at all aspects of it. And if you don't trust the police department to look at it, you get other police departments and other counties to give you some stats, you know, on their information, not ours.
But they're looking at cutting the hours on the top, on the lay-in. They're looking at ordinance. We're talking about ordinance. It's totally different than what you're talking about. The cities that are talking about that, and I've talked to several of those different cities. The cities that are talking about cutting hours are talking about cutting hours after two A. M.
Can they allow serving, all of them allow serving on Sunday morning from the police?
They're not having issues. You can go to St. Augustine right now on a, on a Sunday, you can go this Sunday and get you a mimosa in the morning. And they don't have an issue with that because that's not where the crime issues really fall. Those issues are falling after, on those late hour sales. We're talking about, the stuff that happens is the stuff that happens after two o'clock. What they perceive as after-hour liquor establishments or nightclub. That's where the issues start, and that's where the bulk of their problems are when it relates to security and activity. It's only after our side of it, it's not on the morning.
Well, I think we do need to look into it and have a lot, see a lot more stats from other counties and cities. And but I think it is something we, we, it, obviously, we have to look at since the issue has been brought up. Uh, I think the current ordinance works, it doesn't cause anybody any problems that I know of. Uh, I can think of a couple that might have caused a problem, but, um, I think it, it is good to have the dialogue, and we need to, we need to look into it and get our own stats now that, you know, and see what's going on there, and look at all sides of it. So, I think the discussion is good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pass it.
Can I say something, my friend?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I've been sitting here for a while, and I said I'm sitting and listening because I wanna hear all of it and both sides of it. But I think this commission needs to know that when some of this stuff went down, we had a police chief that was against alcohol, period. And he was set up and had his thinking in closing a bunch of them down. And he did close some of them down. And I know we look at some of those figures, I hate pie charts, and I hate graphs and stuff 'cause they can be manipulated as, as they go. We need to look at our times, the day and times now. It's a big difference in two thousand five and two thousand sixteen. And we need to look at the, the young people or the people that are in this town that wanna make it grow. And we need to keep that open mind to hear, 'cause I think that's what we wanna do. We wanna know how the citizens that who are, are living here and wanna make it a place that, that they can live in safely and securely and still have some activities going on.
If you look at, if you look at where we were, and there were a lot of heartache, um, even as it related to alcohol consumption and some of these festivals in expanded areas from where they've been historically. We haven't seen a lot of problems. We anticipated a lot of problems. And, and we don't wanna be known as the community where people are just walking up and down the street drinking. But we, you know, there was some anticipation that there was gonna be additional problems that related to doing that stuff, and it's worked out fine. And sometimes, it's, it's the culture of the community and how things work that's, that creates that situation more than anything else. So, you know, yeah, we anticipate certain things, but it hasn't happened. It's, it's a far different time than where we are now.
If the topic was just changing the Sunday availability time by one hour, I probably would not address you. I, I, I wouldn't like it, that's my personal stance. But if it was just one hour, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother you. Here's my theory. When I look at the minutes of the previous couple of meetings, and I hear people wanting to draw a relationship between seven o'clock Monday morning and seven o'clock Sunday morning, and we don't have problems at seven o'clock Monday morning, we don't anticipate having problems seven o'clock on Sunday morning, I've got to remind all of us, seven o'clock Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday morning, the greatest part of our population are at work until four o'clock or so in the afternoon. Then there is another significant percentage of people that have been working the graveyard shift or a second shift, and they're sleeping in at seven o'clock in the morning. So I don't believe we can look at any kind of history or numerical data Monday through Friday and compare it or anticipate a comparison to Sunday morning. Now, the reason I say that is, I know, I know we just heard we're talking about an hour. But I'm also hearing what could be the invitation to move this Sunday discussion to a larger block of time like starting at seven o'clock in the morning. And, and now I'm really concerned. And now I go back to the numbers that the police department provided, and, and I apologize for being a broken record. But in the two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen period where there were a hundred and seventy-six alcohol, uh, a hundred and seventy-six calls DUI alcohol-related whatever, twenty-seven were after two o'clock in the afternoon. Only two were in that seven o'clock to two o'clock timeframe. I also look at the numbers, and that says it is even across the board. Any day of the week of that population of a hundred and seventy-six events, it's even, no matter what, as long as the day ends in a Y, there's gonna be about the same number of events. But not between seven A. M. and two P. M. Almost across the board. Let's keep our ordinance the way that it is. We'll keep our numbers where they are, we'll keep our safety where it is. Another concern, another fear is if the ordinance gets changed by more than the hour. I admit this upfront, by more than the hour, if Sunday becomes a seven A. M. day instead of maybe a twelve o'clock noon day. Now we're gonna have to start recording DUIs and alcohol-related callouts and all of these other instances. And my question would be, how many issues, how many instances do we need before we realize we made a mistake changing the ordinance? And now we've gotta go back to where it was, or we've got to modify it again? When we see a bad traffic accident, when we see an intersection that has a bad traffic accident, we don't immediately impose new requirements, new speed limits or whatever just because of one accident. We don't put in a traffic light just because of one accident. We build a history and then we take action. But this history can re, it can cover thousands of dollars of vehicle damage and property damage and personal injury, and it could represent fatalities that I don't want us as a city to have to entertain. Now, one last thing, please. I have been, I, I grew up here in Palatka, graduated from high school in Hastings, had one year at the junior college in sixty-eight, left home, went in the service, did not come back to Palatka until two thousand and one. So I can't speak to anything in Putnam County or Palatka from sixty-eight to two thousand and one. And I was on call from two thousand and one until I retired at the paper mill. So I can't speak to a lot of things going on here in Palatka in those early days. So I don't know what is driving, works the foundation for we have to be more progressive or we're not like we used to be, or things aren't as bad as we used to be. But Mr. Mayor, folks of the commission, the most tragic thing that I see in Palatka right now that we're not addressing, and this issue will not help, is right across the street from City Hall, the brand-new school board building with a colored digital sign out front. It's not bidding our high school graduates Bon Voyage and congratulations for being accepted at college and go, go conquer the world and go make a name for yourself and remember Palatka. But one of the three messages that keeps rotating by, have a safe and sober graduation. I've got to tell you, as a pastor, I'm losing the battle. I've got to tell you that as Putnam County schools, we're losing the battle. We are not getting the point across to young people, there are hazards to drinking. Maybe not that one, I don't know what mimosa is, but I know Bloody Marys. Maybe there aren't some of those hazards at twelve o'clock Sunday afternoon with the Bloody Mary. But doggone it, it puts people in that environment to take the next step and the next step. And the sign out front, it just bears so much truth. Have a safe and a sober graduation.
Aren't those hazards there those other six days too?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Aren't those hazards pre- those other six days too?
Yes, sir.
With no thought of what the times are?
But I don't wanna give them additional opportunities for them to take place. And, and that's why I admit upfront, I'm losing the battle, and my fellow pastors, we are, we are losing the battle turning this tide. So we need all the help we can get.
What time do services start on Sunday?
Uh, I start at ten, and the other service starts at ten thirty. We have two services at our church.
Do Sunday School too?
Sunday School starts at nine thirty, nine twenty.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Any other speakers? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Ms. Mayor, do we go? I mean, how do, where do we get to a point to where we actually start actively addressing what we're in? Like, that's what I, I think that's my hope.
Has it challenged you?
I mean, but we're having, we have these meetings on days where you have individuals, you have people that church, you have churches that have prayer meeting on Tuesday, and you have churches that have meeting on Wednesday. And we're putting ourselves in these positions that we're not maximizing the people that possibly could be here. So are we really, truly, honestly getting the feedback from the, uh, community that we honestly need?
I think we are, because if a church has prayer meeting on Tuesday, that means they're free on Wednesday. We got a meeting on Wednesday. If a church has prayer meeting on Wednesday, they can come on Tuesday. If they got prayer meeting on both of those days, then they can come on Thursday because we got commission meetings. And what I've seen is I, I, I've seen a disinterest and a disconnect from this community when it comes to this topic. The topic is not as hot as we wanna make the topic big. It's not the same topic, and I'm pretty sure that if we were talking about extending hours from two A. M. to four A. M., this room would be full. And, and since that's not the conversation, I just, I, what I've seen is a disinterest. I've been in a room with ten pastors, and it wasn't a, it wasn't a hot topic of interest. You know, it was one, it was one pastor out of the, out of the group that had some apprehension, and his was for consumption completely on Sunday period.
But I'm saying, we, we, we're having this meeting, I only see two different people that don't come to the commission meeting. So, we're hearing from, we're hearing from the same people, and I'm quite sure these same people are gonna be there tomorrow.
So can we, the rest don't care?
Okay, so then we still have to get to a point of what are we going to do?
Well, we did, we get, we've given them the opportunity.
We started with a fear. We gave them the opportunity, and we still got stuff after.
I know it, but they, but we had rooms full of people. And people have to know that if they, we are doing something that other commissions haven't done. We haven't had this many workshops or talks about it where people from the community to come and have their input. At least we say we are here with open minds and open heart to hear how the citizens feel so that we can do the best job that we can do. And I really came to listen because I thought we were gonna have more people here to give their opinion so that I could hear both sides, and I can sit there and, and not sleep a whole lot of nights trying to be fair and figure out what we need for the city. Times have changed, and people, people really don't seem to be interested. If you look, it's the same way our commission meeting, you got us there, and then you've got extra meetings we've entered. Since you all have gotten here, we've had, we're supposed to have two meetings a month. We've had six, four to six meetings a month.
Any other comments from the commission?
Ms. Mayor, I guess I got a couple quick. Well, let me, first of all, we can stay here. Um, I think when the ordinance was put in place, I remember businesses in basically downtown area, but businesses over the city, they came forward and talking about the issues they were having on Monday mornings, and they were opening up their doors, and the activities that they played, run the business, and they believed that they were fine as well. Uh, so all of that, and then also you had bags from the hospital talking about cases of, uh, uh, hospital individuals talking about, uh, number of injuries and that kind of, that occurred during those hours as well. Uh, so all of that was a part of the discussion that kinda went into it, went into that ordinance as well. But my question is, uh, yeah, you talked about individuals, uh, when you said on the scene for mimosas and, uh, and Bloody Marys. And my question would be, would they get those, uh, I guess those beverages from, uh, restaurant, uh, individual, uh, places that primarily, uh, sold, what, who was their primary sales?
Restaurant.
Okay.
And it's, it's a common thing, all of our, I, I, I do a bunch of traveling. And if you look in communities throughout, you're, you see, you see businesses that cater to brunch. There are a lot more brunch-style businesses. You don't necessarily see that here, even if you look at certain businesses like the golf course, you have the same thing. Uh, people throughout this community, whether it's public or the gas station or whatever, they are constantly losing sales to entities that are in the county. And so, is it fair for a business that is in the city to be placed at a disadvantage over businesses in the county? Or when we look at the restriction of, on the consumption side of it, especially we're talking, we're, we're talking from a restaurant standpoint, uh, is it racially related to crime? Because I don't think the statistics support all of it. And so, that's the real issues where we are. But anytime we place restrictions in, whether it's an ordinance or whatever, you do government action, then it has to be racially related to health, safety, or welfare if you're gonna time, place, manner. And that's the part that has to be there. When I look at this ordinance from the legal side of it, we're legislating, it looks like we're legislating it strictly from a morality standpoint and not from any other standpoint.
Ms. Mayor, one of the things that happened when, uh, uh, I guess probably two months ago when Mr. Spales stood and spoke about the alcohol ordinance, and, and he made a, a comment that was very different to me. And that comment was, let's be fair, let's not give one business on one side of the street advantage because they live in the county, and the other business that lives, that's in the city, uh, give them a, make, put them at a disadvantage. It should be equal for all. And I think that one of the things that, uh, I think I stated probably a couple, at least a month or so ago, you know, I don't have a problem aligning with county ordinance. And I think it makes police seem a lot easier as well. I think, uh, it's just, it, it, it's just better for everybody. I think it puts everybody on the same, uh, on the same plan feel also. Uh, but, you know, I would just like to know from an economic development standpoint as well too is, uh, uh, is there an opportunity? Uh, and I know that the golf course, uh, talks about, they probably, uh, they, they probably, you know, more people, they, what I would say, they're, they're, and I know that we've had certain owners also, uh, to come in and, and talk about, you know, they probably, it could boost their, uh, their economics as well. So, you know, I'm just, I would like to hear from them from an economic standpoint on what they would think that extra hour would do.
Are we talking about extra hour, just moving it from back from one P. M. to twelve P. M., aligning everything with, with the county? Or are we talking about going back to seven A. M. in the morning?
Right on.
In four?
And that's the question. And that, that's the question, and that's the purpose we're having at the town hall meetings, to get the discussion from the churches, from the business owners, from everybody. The purpose of these meetings is to fact-fine and to find out what the perception is within the community, and then to bring it back. If it's the pleasure of the commission for me to make recommendations since I brought it up, I can do that at the commission meeting when we just, when it's put on the agenda for us to make a decision on what we wanna do with the ordinance based on the information that we got. I don't have a problem doing that, but I think that it's incumbent upon us to listen to the people and to hear what's out. But I think that it's incumbent upon us to listen to the people and to hear what's out there. In this situation, when I look out here, it's four people in a room. And so, um, that tells me that either everybody's busy tonight or there wasn't much interest. And so tomorrow night, if it's four people in a room, I'll take it that there's not much interest. And so, um, that was one of the reasons that we have multiple nights so that we can give people multiple opportunities to come forward. So, um, are there any, any more comments? Any other speakers? Any other questions or comments for the commission? Go ahead. You can stand up, we're, we're getting ready to set this one down.
Yeah, um, I do, I thought there'd be more people than there are here tonight, but, uh, no offense, and I don't mean this in a, in a defensive way, but at the fire fee hearings, there were several hundred people, anywhere from two to three hundred people. And they expressed their displeasure over the fire fee and it was passed anyway, which you all decided was...
We're not talking about the fire fee.
No, I know that, but I'm talking about when people came out and spoke. A lot of people expressed to me, well, what if these people are gonna be ignored? And I think they're kinda scared of that, some of them are maybe.
I told you that we're in the commission too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and, but, and about brunches, the majority, and I'm sure you know that because I think several of y'all go to church, so you know, what, when church people get out of church, they go to the local restaurants and they eat. The majority of the local restaurants, business on Sunday are the church people that go to church, go, they go at the church. Everybody goes out and eats, Baptists, Catholics, Methodist, Stalin, they go out and they eat. And I think that the businesses need to look, if they start serving alcohol and they, and if they happen to offend some of the church members, the church members will not go there and eat anymore. So I think that's an economics thing that needs to be, it needs to be looked at and considered.
Was that a trick of a family mimosa?
They might, but they, but they, but they don't want it started at eleven o'clock in all probability. I know a couple of people have talked to me and said, well, you know, we, we'll be glad to go at noon time, say Magnoni Cafe and we'll have a mimosa or whatever you have, helps you have with lunch, but we don't want it started before twelve o'clock. But I think going with the county ordinance, it would give it to be a splendid idea. As Mr. Northwood said, it would certainly, uh, help alleviate some of the calls for service. And if we got exactly to the county ordinance, that means we shut off our sales in Palatka from Monday through Thursday. We shut it off at 2:00 a.m. and then Friday and Saturday, we extend to 2:00 a.m. And then on Sunday morning, we start at noon time. So I just, you know, that's, that's just all I had on that, so thank you.
But as it relates to the alcohol sales, we're only talking about Sunday, correct? Because you do have alcohol sales that happen from Monday through Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir, you're correct.
So church people also go to restaurants and have brunches or breakfast and lunch as well during those times?
They, they probably do, a lot of them working and you're, you're correct on that. There was a downtown business, yes. There was a downtown business, it's no longer a business, that had a, they did a really good lunchtime crowd. It was a breakfast shop. And there's twenty-five to thirty little church ladies from the various churches went there every day and ate lunch. And the business got permission to serve alcohol. The ladies stopped and in less than a year, the business had no customers and they had to close. Just for your information, you are correct, they do, they do when they're not working. They, and people that work go during their lunch hour and eat, yeah.
And they had twenty-five customers, they had another problem.
Just for, just, just for the sake of, of being honest and putting the truth out, because, you know, one of the things that we're not finding good, that's your morality is, you know, me and my family go out to eat probably at least once a week. And every restaurant that we have gone to, uh, serve alcohol. And that's a choice. Either I can choose to order an alcoholic beverage or I could choose not to. And I think it's a choice among people whether people want to drink alcohol or not want to drink alcohol. Uh, but it's more, I'm more concerned about, first of all, public safety and making sure, but also making sure that it makes it easier for our police department to enforce the ordinance, whether the, what, you know, because we got these, all these auto claims in the city to worry about. You don't know if we have to die when you're in the city and we're out in the city. But it just makes it uniform and makes it easier for everybody. Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done.
Any other comments? See you, man.